With the new Public Works Director coming on, we did make an initiative to do a lot more stuff in-house, as well as the trending down before he started. So the goal is a little bit less reliance on the engineering staff and more reliance on some internal staff. So we were trending down and we're thinking we're going to trend even more down next year.
And Mr. Wesley.
If you don't mind, I have like two questions. Okay, this leave time payback, I know it's only seventeen heart, who is that? I mean, because we didn't budget for 2013, 2013, but we got budget for 2014.
Yes.
Well, if it's fortunately or unfortunately, but I've acquired the years now of service to the city where that's actually me.
Okay, so debate.
Can you speak up a little bit more?
That's mine, that's for my years of service with the city. The leave buyback program that all the employees are entitled to. Through all my accrued sick days, it's the leave buyback program for the city, all city employees, once you reach a threshold, then you get half of it back. I've had that for many years.
So, is that in your, that's not in your contract, or?
Yeah, I was entitled to all the benefits of a department head for salary raises and benefits and things like that.
Okay. May I continue?
Yes, please do.
Why will, this one really, why will fuel go down in price? As you notice that fuel is going up thirty cents every week, it seems like, why would you drop the fuel count? You got proposed for five thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars at the end for 2014.
Mr. Manager.
We trended up a little this year. We went back from the average of the previous three years. We didn't want to go straight upshot on the fuel in that account, so we kind of averaged a couple of years out and got to that number. I didn't want to shoot the number too high, but still, it's over a thousand dollars higher than we budgeted for this year, so.
Okay, and then the other one more, office supplies, is that because we did overrun on office supplies, so we upped it again?
Yeah, office supplies did run a little higher this year, again, trending up, so didn't want to kick it too far up, so again, seven hundred over the previous year, so.
That's all I have to say here.
Okay, back to Mr. Wilson. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Woods.
On the office supplies, have we seen any cost savings with the iPads now that we don't have to print all those packets? I would think that some of that's starting to walk.
That's not where that savings would have come out, well, paper, but there's a lot of printing costs involved in that, too. We've definitely seen a decline in paper usage, obviously, and we get charged seven tenths of a penny for paper, so we've seen a decrease in some of that cost with the maintenance agreements. The iPads, there is a slight increased cost with monthly recurring charge, or not monthly, sorry, never mind, there's a small decrease in cost.
Anything else? Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just moving on to city clerk, the clerk's office, again, fiscal thirteen budget, fourteen budget, nominal increase in salaries. The contractual services increase is due specifically to the cost that we pay to the codifier. So every time we pass an ordinance, we have to send it to the codifier, they prepare it and put it on the city's code website, which isn't the website that we're going to be redoing, that's the city code website through, through the codifier's site. And over the last couple of years, the ordinances have tended to become bigger, and so the bigger they are, the more they cost, you know, the UDO, when that came through a few years ago, was a few thousand dollars to get that codified and put on the site. So as the ordinance are getting passed, and there's more of them, and the size of them dictates the cost of that. So that's the increase in contractual. Other, a reduction in the conferences and meetings line item in the clerk's office, specifically for, it appears to be the clerk herself, is kind of dialing back on a couple of things that she used to do.
Before you go to the next page, and contractual services for, which one is it?
Business licenses.
We projected two thousand two hundred, and now we're proposing two hundred? What was the reason for that?
The reason for that was they had to restock their envelopes this year, and they got, I don't know if I want to say a deal, but because of the quantity, the way the quantity price point broke, they got better pricing by buying a significantly larger amount of envelopes. So I think we have envelopes now for, I think, the next six or seven years, I think, to cover us, so it's not something we're going to see going forward for quite a while.
What if we change the name of the city or something? Go ahead. Please continue.
This is nothing on the clerks, we'll go into community development. We'll come back to personnel in a second. Contractual decrease again, the last couple of years, the community development department has tried to made a concerted effort to get away from as many outside review services for plan reviews, so that trend appears to be continuing. Commodities nominal decrease, the other two are just nominal adjustments, and a couple of the line items. There is, back to the personnel, one expanded level item in there. If you're in the budget book, it's going to be on page 106 in the book itself, and it's for a part-time, .5, housing and zoning inspector. This was a position that existed a couple of years ago, but wasn't rehired due to some attrition, and it's back in there now. And I will defer to either the manager or Mr. Forrest for any questions relating to this position. If you want to go to the next slide, though. There's just a brief recap of the summary that's in the budget and the amount requested for this position, so if there's any questions.
Alderman Wesley.
You have thirty-four thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars. Is this an employee under a thousand hours? I mean, what kind of benefits are? So for a part-time position, you're going to have a person over a thousand hours?
So part-time position, we're looking for twenty-four hours a week from that person, so it would exceed the thousand hours.
Twenty-four, how many hours does that come to a year?
Over a thousand.
Okay, could I go on? Could I go on?
Yeah.
You know, I'll be in favor of this, but I have a little problem that when you do the rental inspections, that I've no houses, I know some houses has been going on for five years, and the city still charges them for the inspection every single year, they're not being inspected. So by, my question to you is, if we're in favor, if I, if this does go through, are we going to eliminate that? I mean, it's not fair to the resident.
I would anticipate that we will. The rental regi, excuse me, the rental registration fee is due and payable every year. When we had a full-time inspector who was just dedicated to enforcing the rental registration program, all the rental occupancies were inspected per, you know, are designed. For example, like a big apartment building, like in Orchard Lakes, they do not inspect every apartment every year, but they will pick a select, say maybe half a dozen in one building, they'll do kind of a smattering, and then the next year, they will inspect other units. But as far as single-family and the smaller, like the two flats and so forth, all those units were being inspected. When the full-time housing and zoning inspector retired, and we eliminated that position to try and keep our budget low, the duties to enforce the rental registration program were added to Joe Johnson's, property maintenance inspection, business license inspections, the fire inspections that he does, so basically, he has several plates in the air right now. I think that we are under utilizing Mr. Johnson's talents, so we do have some plans, due to some changes in fire district personnel and policies there, and if you look at our goals and objectives for 2013 and 14, I would like to re-initiate an aggressive program as far as doing annual inspections in our commercial and industrial buildings. Several years ago, we had three part-time fire inspectors. Those inspectors, it was their job to do the business license inspections and the annual inspections in all the commercial and industrial occupancies. After they were working for about a year, we went for several years where every commercial and industrial building was inspected once a year by city staff. As personnel changed and there were some changes at the fire district, just staffing-wise, we're just unable to do that. Right now, we have some buildings in the park that probably haven't been inspected for three, four, five years. And at this point, staff relies on people, anonymous phone calls tipping us off to dangerous conditions, or perhaps, you know, doing a business license inspection, he might stumble across something. So the bottom line is, it's our feeling we need this part-time person to take back the rental registration program, which by the way, does generate about fifty thousand dollars a year in revenues. Allow Mr. Johnson to get back to getting in, starting to re-inspect some of these commercial and industrial occupancies. He has started studying, he's going to become certified by the ICC as a fire plan reviewer and a fire inspector, which again, will enable us to make better use of staff and rely less on the Wooddale Fire Protection Bureau, which again, has, is, you know, they're undergoing some transitions as well. So we're trying to keep things in-house and give not only the residents, but the tenants in the commercial and industrial occupancies, the service that they really should be getting.
Thank you, Alderman Woods, please, and then Winger.
A little earlier, we were talking about the revenues in the building department going down, but we want to add expense. I'm not saying that we don't need those functions, you know, and in listening to you, it sounds like we could use a full-time guy. You know, you're settling for part-time, but we really need a full-time, so as we're looking at this, you know, maybe we should look at it structurally, just, you know, address a few, you know, life safety issues in the commercial district, and then in the rental district also. I mean, it sounds weird, I'm in favor of hiring the part-time guy, you know, but really, we should look at what we're doing, and if we need a full-time guy, we should address that sooner than later, I guess, to get everything.
Mr. Forrest.
In a perfect world, we'd like another full-time person, yet, since we eliminated the position last year, you know, again, after discussions with Mr. Johnson, he was willing to take on the additional work, but you can only have so many plates in the air at one time. I mean, he spends most of his day just running around putting out fires, so to speak. You know, you might look at, you know, again, in our annual accumulation of, you know, accomplishments, he's initiated close to four hundred property maintenance cases, and that's not just a one-time inspection. Those are sometimes two, three, four, five inspections. There could be two, three, four, five correspondences before we would end up issuing a citation. He's also done, we've registered four hundred and one rental properties, so he's done those inspections. We've done the business license. I mean, again, I, if you would consider a full-time person, that would be terrific. I'm sure we would keep them busy, but I just felt if we came forward with somebody that we could have three days a week, let's go for another year, see how that goes, that may be enough. If it's not, I'll be back in this chair next year, asking to upgrade that to a full-time position.
That answer. Alderman Winger.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the request for the expanded part-time personnel for the thirty-four thousand six forty-eight.
I'll second.
All in favor? Have a question? Yeah, Alderman Winger, go ahead. I will.
John, I called you about the stipend, the two heart dollars. I know it's penny, but I mean, why is that there for a part-timer?
Well, this would be a union position, and the union positions are eligible for stipends, I believe.
So, wait a minute. It's going to be a union position, entitled to the stipend, right off the front? I thought they just said, right out of the box, we give them stipend? I'm just asking.
Sure, that particular stipend is the safety stipend, and now that you mention it that way, I suppose you're right, because you have to go a full year before you get the stipend, and then you get the stipend the following November or December.
So it shouldn't be there.
So it's technically, since it would be a full year before they'd be eligible for it, we could remove the two hundred dollars from it, so.
That's right, but may I do one follow-up? So then, where does he, we hire a new, new part-timer, since it's a union position, does he get vacation automatically? Like everyone else? I think they don't even, I mean, because that could change my mind tonight.
Please.
Sure, yeah, the part-time employees in the union, since they're part-time, I believe their vacation and leave time packages are different than the full-time employees, so I would have to double-check the contract, but I'm pretty sure that the part-time employees in the union do not have the same vacation rights that the full-time employees have. I know the part-time employees of the city, as Mr. Johnson can actually attest, don't have the same vacation rights as the rest of the full-time employees.
Right, I'd like to wait on this until we get an info, though. Or else I'm going to know for this position right now.
Sorry, Wesley.
Brad, do we have any part-time union employees now? I was always told that, I've talked about doing it in Public Works before, and can't do it because of union.
The two dial-a-ride drivers are part-time. And to my knowledge, they don't, they don't.
Against my question is, are they in a different union than Public Works? I mean, or is it just one union?
No, they're all in local 150. So again, the dial-a-ride drivers do not have vacation time. If they're not there, they don't get paid, so I know that's the way the part-time employees that aren't in the union work. I don't recall specific language, I mean, certainly, we can get back to you, but my recollection tells me that if they're part-time, they're not eligible for the vacation benefits.
So then, according to Alderman Wesley, this is the same thing, correct?
Correct, they'll be part-time, so yeah, if it follows form like I'm thinking it does, they would not get vacation. If they're, if they're here, they get paid, if they're not here, they don't get paid.
Mr. Mayor.
Dial-a-ride, they're under a thousand hours, though. That makes it, I think, isn't that a threshold?
That's just for, that's just for IMRF, that doesn't have anything to do with vacation.
Vacation.
I think, correct.
Okay.
Questions? Alderman Woods.
Well, I can appreciate the insurance issue and the saving money, I mean, if we really need this person, seems like they have all those, those things covered in the request of thirty-four thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars. I don't see that that's a big enough hurdle to not pass this.
Alderman Wesley.
He's got minus the two heart, because he's not entitled until the one year passed. So if you take the two hundred dollars out that he's not entitled to.
I know, but I'm sure they won't pay it to him, just like every, every number that's written in this book doesn't get spent.
But again, I would like to see it removed out here, for we know.
Okay, I'll make a motion to remove the two hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
There was a motion that I don't believe we voted on yet.
You are correct.
What about my motion, I mean?
Yeah, we have to follow up on that motion first. The first, first motion was to approve the part-time person.
And I'm willing to amend my motion to minus the two hundred. And does the second, you agree?
Yes, yes, I agree.
I'm sorry?
Motion to amend.
Oh, okay, and the secondary agrees? Okay, we have to go, to take a vote now? You all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's settled. Please continue, sir.
Okay, before we get off of community development, was there any other questions on the community development budget, or are we free to move on to the finance department?
You can make that change in the other page, too, right? On page 107?
Correct.
Alderman Wesley.
Hey, Brad, on IMRF, you propose fifty-eight thousand and projected fifty thousand, what's the difference on that? You say you have the same amount of employees. Raises?
Correct, the increase, yeah, because it's a combination of the first six lines in there, the biggest of which, you know, salaries went from three eighty-two to with the new person now up to four twenty-seven, and it's thirteen point three three percent of the salaries in the overtime, so it's effectively just the math on the increases and the addition of the new person.
Okay.
Continue.
Okay, moving on to the finance department, personnel again, with the other ones, increases, contractual decreased just under ten thousand. We had an expanded level item in there last year that was a one-time deal that we removed out, so we were able to drop the budget back down. Commodities was down two hundred dollars due to a decrease in uniforms. We were able to get some better, better numbers and better data on the uniform costs going forward for the employees. Overall, with the removal of the expanded level item from last year, finance department's just up a hair over three thousand dollars, no new programs or anything to that effect.
Questions? Continue.
Legal, there are four different line items within legal, and I'm going to pass the mic to the manager here in a second, but legal, we are proposing budget-to-budget increase at thirty-seven thousand six hundred. Part of it is due to some increased use on some bigger items over the year, last couple of years, kind of trending it out a little bit, and also defer to the manager for a quick note on one of the line items.
Mr. Manager.
For specifically the legal labor line item, since 2007, we've had Storino, Romillo, and Durkin do a lot of this labor work for us. Their rates have been one hundred and seventy-five an hour since 2007, when we started working with them. They have sent a letter requesting a raise in their fee structure to one hundred and eighty-five dollars, so a raise in ten dollars. Attorney Bond informed staff that for them to enact this increase, the council would have to give the sign-off, this is not abnormal, as Bond Dixon has given rate increases in the past. Bond Dixon's current rate for the city is one seventy. As I said, Storino, Romillo, and Durkin have not increased their fees since '07, so we would need a consensus of the council to, to get that fee raised, if you wanted to do that.
Alderman Wesley.
So your proposal now is twelve thousand five hundred for legal? I mean, for labor? My question, is that going to finish off the Public Works contract, and is there another contract coming up that I don't know about?
Hopefully, that will finish off the Public Works contract, and then we do have another police department contract on the horizon as well, for records.
So my question is, do you feel, since the increase, I don't know how it works, do you feel that is the right number for labor attorney, knowing that we're going to fight two contracts? I mean, we'll be in two, two contract negotiations? I mean, I just don't know if that's the right number.
At the time that we developed the budget numbers, we hadn't got that letter, so we'd feel comfortable maybe upping it a little bit, maybe, you know, fifteen, fifteen thousand, up at maybe twenty-five hundred, somewhere in that ballpark-ish, because like I said, we just got that letter.
Well, why don't you just make it, why don't you just make it twenty thousand? Because you're going, you're going running to two contracts at the same time, I guarantee that. So why don't you just do the budget at twenty Gs?
Well, we're trending ten this year, like I said, you know, some of the negotiations haven't been as contentious as the past, and we're kind of streamlining things. We can bump it up to twenty, and then if we come in under, we come in under.
I'd rather do that than, I'd rather up that.
Mayor, you had a comment? Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, a couple of years prior, we were eighteen thousand, twenty-four thousand, so, right, we spent twenty-four, but this year, we're going to spend ten thousand, I mean, it's not a big, we'll adjust.
Question here from Alderman Wesley.
You said, you mentioned that our legal, Mr. Bond's rates is what?
One seventy.
And labor is what, asking for?
Right now, one seventy-five, and they're asking for one eighty-five.
Well, why don't we just use our gen, our regular, our regular attorney for labor? He's done, he's done it before, so.
Mr. Manager.
Go to another, go out for bid and see what we get.
Certainly, certainly a possibility, if that's what the council wants to do. I know Bond Dixon was the one that recommended Storino, Romillo, and Durkin to do our 150 contracts, and then we moved to Storino, Romillo, and Durkin for our police union contracts for uniform ended, for uniform procedure, and he's done a good job in the past, and like I said, the rates haven't been raised since '07. But if that's what the council wants to do, we can do that as well.
Alderman Winger.
On a different topic, but before I go into that, that I would be in favor of keeping the labor attorney that we have in place and allowing them to continue. I can't get my eyes off the first line item, the two hundred fifty-eight thousand projected for this year for, for our primary attorney. Now, I don't want department heads to have their hands tied and not be able to call the attorney and that sort of thing. I believe the dialogue is important when you have questions and work to do, but two hundred fifty-eight thousand is a lot of money, and I'm thinking what we need to do is look at a list of what are the bigger projects that we have the attorney chasing down, whether they're looking after project X and Y and Z, and, and then maybe when we see that listing at the council, we can say, and whether it's an exact session or open session, I'll leave that up to Mr. Mermis and the attorney where that is, but once we see these projects that the attorney's office is working on, we may say, maybe we don't want to continue with that and save, you know, ten thousand here and there. I think it's easy for us to lose sight of some of the projects that the attorney's office is working on in the background, and just to get another outlook at this. Would that be something fairly easy to put together, like what are his, I mean, is he working on any annexation that we haven't really talked about in six months, but he's working on it and billing us for it, kind of thing?
Mr. Manager.
We do get a detailed invoice of, obviously, all the projects he's working on on a monthly basis. Just for example, one of the big items this year was, you know, video, video poker. I mean, that took up a ton, a ton of attorney time, staff calls, elected official calls, staff meetings, you know, extra hours with that. You know, some of the bigger things we're doing now, unfortunately, just take up a ton of time, and the more involvement or changes we make at the committee and council level, that lends itself to more attorney interaction on a lot of these big topics. Now, realistically, that budgeted number of one seventy-nine last year, I guess that's Now, realistically, that budgeted number of 179 last year, I guess that's, you know, staff's fault, my fault for budgeting that a little too low, whereas you look at the actual from, you know, 12, that was 231, and before that, it was 205. So yeah, you've gone up about 20 grand proposed this year off of the 2012 actual number. So that budgeted number for this year, 179, was too low of a projection, and bumping it up to 231 basically is bringing it right around the 2012 actual. So we're hoping to get back down to that level. But if you guys want some reports on, you know, bigger projects, we can maybe scan the previous fiscal year on the larger ticket items that got us up that high. I can get that.
Well, I believe you answered my question, that video gaming is now, most of that's behind us. And then the invoice that we get every, what, month? We can always review that individual, on an individual basis, and then we'll have our answers. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Woods?
Just wanted to follow up on what Alderman Winger was saying. Maybe if we could just staff, I don't need to see, but kind of review, sometimes we get laxed and fall in, you know, this is what we do every week, and maybe we're burning a few hours that we don't necessarily need to burn. I mean, that's, at his rate, that's 1,522 hours a year, or 29.30 hours a week. He's almost a full-time employee. You know, at some point, we could hire an attorney, have him on staff 40 hours a week, and it would be cheaper. So all I'm saying is maybe if staff could revisit some of the procedures or some of the things they go through, maybe we got, you know, caught up and he's involved in some things that doesn't necessarily have to be involved in or that early. Thank you.
Alderman Coles?
We used to have an attorney, that we used to have to pay his health insurance for his family and everything, and then we decided that even though his rates were low, when they figured in the hospitalization and everything, it was higher than what we're paying now. So I don't think, I think Mr. Bond is right in line. If he wouldn't, he wouldn't be in four different, four or five different cities around in the area. So as far as I'm concerned, he's right in line.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, a couple of things, just so the council feels more comfortable. I will produce a report with some potential cost-saving measures for you guys to look at, some ideas, so we'll make that a point moving forward. But we still do need some clarity on the labor situation. Do we want to go ahead and approve that 185 as part of the budget?
I think, I think being a labor attorney is quite different from being a municipal attorney. I think if we have to pay a labor attorney a little bit more per hour, we don't have all the phone calls and all the other things going on like a regular attorney does, so it doesn't come out anywhere near the same. So I'd just like to leave it where it's at.
I'd second that, if it's a motion.
Anybody else in comment? Alderman Wesley?
I think, if I am mistaken, Jeff needs a clarification. Are we going to give him a raise increase? Because simple reason, keep in mind, we don't give him a raise increase that he's asking for. He's in the middle of a contract negotiation right now. And then we could go all the way back to the beginning again. Does this council want to go that direction and start from the table again? Which will cost more.
He wouldn't change his attitude just because of the dollars.
I don't know.
Alderman Coles? First, the manager.
Yeah, I think that...
He's a labor...
Go ahead, the manager.
Go ahead, Jeff, go ahead. He's a, he's a labor, he's a different type of lawyer. Lawyers take their different types of titles, and they do different types of things. You got, like Pat Bond's municipal lawyer. I know one guy's a commercial lawyer, the other guy's a divorce lawyer. This guy is just on unions and stuff like that, and that's what he does. He'll do maybe two or three, and he knows the angles that the other lawyers don't know. So a raise of $10 an hour to a lawyer is nothing. If you go to, take one on a traffic DU, you're going to cost $2,500 right off the bat. So he, you can't argue with him, otherwise you ain't going to get your license back. So...
Do we have...
I'm just letting you know that he is a labor lawyer, and 10 bucks an hour more, I don't think is going to kill us.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the floor to approve the 85, 180, dollar, 185 dollar an hour?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
One more question from Alderman Woods, and we'll...
I was going to make a motion to move forward, but it's already done.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Fine, it passes. Let's move on.
Just one other point of clarity, are we going to bump that number from 12, 12.5 to 20 for legal labor, just to play it safe? And then if we come under, we come under?
You have to count to 15. It's all done.
Because there was some conversation and debate on raising that number, I don't know if that's the consensus.
I think leave it. Leave it alone.
Mr. Wilson?
Okay, unless there's anything else on legal, we'll move on to the police department. You know, just a sidebar here, you know, I mean, for the 5 million, 5.2 million that they have, you know, of the 128,000 dollar increase that they have, 127,000 of that is in salaries, so really, you're looking at a net of, what, $800 in an increase among all the other lines not related to personnel? You know, the contractual services went down. No real one item stood out in there, just a combination of a lot of little things going through there. And then in commodities, they did bump up their fuel costs. You know, this year, I believe, was projected out higher, so they wanted to bring those more in line than the $1,000 decrease in other, again, just a few odds and ends here and there, so...
Just a couple of comments on the police department, if I may. We have 22 officers in the field. We have three shifts, eight hours, or eight officers, eight officers and six officers, right?
Correct. The typical coverage for the patrol division is a watch commander and then three to five officers on any given day, depending on days off, training days, a sick day, a vacation day, but that's the coverage for all three shifts, 24 hours a day.
Okay, and we're covering, the city covers 4.67 square miles.
That's correct.
And, number four, we have had no formal citizen complaints in 2012?
No, we haven't. We do get a number of informal, hey, I'm concerned about this, or we received this. There is a formal procedure in place for, if someone wants to file a complaint against an officer, they have to sign a sworn affidavit. We have not had any of those. We do investigate, even if it's a verbal, we investigate those types of things, and we've actually, as a staff, next Tuesday at our meeting, discussing how to even better track the watch commander getting a call saying, I'm upset, I got this ticket, trying to track those even better. But you're correct, we have had no formal citizen complaints last year.
Actually, we've had 14,688 calls in 19, in 2012.
That's correct.
So that's not bad for handling, even though the police department does take a lot of our budget, we have excellent police protection, and that hasn't changed. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wilson, I just wanted to mention those points. Oh, we have, yes, sir, Mr. Wesley.
I have a question.
All right.
Let's go back to your budget. The overtime. Why in 2012, we went 215, then projected is 250, and you're proposing 288? Now, I went back to the previous budgets, and you're even higher this year than the previous years, projecting 288. Okay? My question is, when we promoted those two deputy chiefs, I thought their overtime would come down a little bit.
Well, there's a number of things at play here. I believe we've been at 288 as a budgeted number for our overtime for the last couple of years. The year before that was probably around 280. Back in '08, I believe we reached $284,000 in overtime. So we're actually coming in significantly less than our overtime was five years ago. At one point, the budget was up to 329,000 in overtime, and we've continued to pare that down. I would love to say that it's going to come in at 240 this year. It's a possibility, but, you know, just in the last two weeks, we've probably had $4,000 to $5,000 in cases just this past weekend that are probably about 2,000 in overtime. It's a very fluid number, you know. So like I said, we've hit the 284 before, and the reorganization that we did in the department with that, and changing around a lot of schedules as we could, you know, we were fortunate that with our caseload, we got down to 215,000 in overtime last year. I would have loved to seen that again this year, and we're not doing anything differently. And there is, you know, deputy chiefs covering shifts for the street, they're covering overtime, managing cases that we would be paying to a sergeant, if a sergeant were in detectives, to handle these investigations. Probably this week alone, there would have been, I'm guessing, 12 to 14 extra hours of overtime spent, but because we have a deputy chief in that role, we're not paying that now. So there definitely was a savings by that. This year is going to be a little bit higher than last year. I hope next year's lower. You know, we'll continue to try and do what we can, it's just, it's flexible as the cases kind of go.
Well, I'm just looking at 2011, you used 250 according to our book.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then last year, you used 215. Okay, then 288, projected 250, 288, you proposed it. So I just want to make sure we on board that we're using those two people that we promoted to deputy chiefs to fill some of this overtime up. I understand there could be a lot of cases going on, I totally understand that. I just don't want, I don't know how word, I just don't want to be able to, it's open checkbook for overtime, and we promoted two deputy chiefs to fill those slots.
No.
I just don't want that to see.
I think the important part of that is we did not add any command staff, we just reorganized a little bit the number of command staff people, so we didn't add anyone to the eight members of the command staff that are sworn personnel, myself included. We adjusted, and I think my estimate was, the minute that that second deputy chief spent 40 hours in one year handling stuff and not receiving any overtime, of which they received none, we already broke even. And I can pretty, I can guarantee you, we're reaching that probably on a monthly basis of extra time that's being spent here by the deputy chiefs handling things. So, you know, the 288, it's kind of a continuation of where we've been over the last few years. I'll come in at 200 next year if I can, I just, I can't guarantee that. One other thing that's in there is our traffic grants that are credited against that, and right now, we've, we're still receiving some state funding for that. If that does go away, and there's certainly been some talk of that, if that goes away, you know, I would certainly come back to you and ask for some approval to expend some overtime dollars for some of the traffic safety stuff we're doing. We do a report on that every year of how much production we're getting out of, so, you know, I wouldn't just go spend 30,000 in overtime without coming to you, but just so you know, this year, last year, we got 30-some thousand from the state, this year, it was cut to 18,000. So that's part of the difference in the cost that you're seeing too.
So, one more. So what you're saying here is that overtime is offset the costs that we lost in grant money that the state gave us before? For projects like seatbelt checks and all that? Because those were always done by a grant, if I am mistaken?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're saying now we lost some of that money because the state cut that? So that's going to offset this overtime? Am I right?
I'm not sure what you mean by offset, but we went from in the 30s last year...
Right.
To right now, this current fiscal year, we're getting about 18,000. We've applied for 46,000 next year, you know, hopefully we get in the 20s. But then what that is, I defer to the finance director on the accounting side of it. I know there's some offsets set against our overtime fund to account for that.
Okay, thanks.
If I may, so I believe what you're saying is that the programs that come in, that revenue is helping offset the expense of overtime to some degree, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Alderman, sorry.
I've got a two-part question. Can you explain longevity pay? And then explain the jump?
Yeah, the longevity pay is by contract, once someone reaches 15, 20, or 25 years, and/or by the personnel manual of the city, they get a, on their anniversary, they get a longevity payment. That's tracked by years of service, and it just so happens that next year, and I did the table on who is going to be receiving it next year, I believe it's the 15-year mark, we have a couple more, and then we have a couple moving into the 20-year mark, which increases a little more. So that's by contract and by personnel manual. We just have a few people moving into that next step, or joining the steps of having more than 15 years of the service that they'll get that longevity pay.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing we might do is find a buyer for all those narcotics that we confiscated. Use that for the budget. Anything else? Yes, Alderman.
I have a question, it's on longevity pay, we keep on talking about this. Brad, the longevity pay, you don't take off for IMRF on that? Basically, does it go as their salary?
Yes.
Good answer.
So if the longevity pay is $500, we're also paying another 13% to their IMRF?
Correct.
Wow, that could add up to quite a bit.
Yeah, I mean, part of that number is the sworn officers, and the sworn officers are in the police pension fund, not in the IMRF fund, so not all of that's in there, but all of the IMRF-eligible employees in the city.
I'm just using that as...
Did we get an update quarterly or something about how, how much overtime the police department has used?
I missed the first part, but are you looking for a quarterly report?
Yeah. Monthly, quarterly, whatever you think would be reasonable?
Yeah, I can include that in the, in the staff monthly, monthly report...
Appreciate that.
As far as some of the things that we're doing it for.
That'll give us an idea of how far you're going.
Sure.
Thank you. Anything else? We're all set. Mr. Wilson?
Moving on to the Board of Police and Fire Commission. This one, it's a pretty small one, but it's up, there's a mandatory testing program that the city has to do, I believe it's every two years, we have to do and update a list, and the cost has increased fairly substantially over the last time we did the testing due to the number of applicants they received last time. I think they received, what, two or three times more applicants than they were anticipating the last time. So this time, they're, they're planning to receive an influx of applications. I know they've talked about different mechanisms to cut off the number of applicants. Perhaps the chief could speak to that a little bit more eloquently than I can, if there's any questions on that.
I noticed we're getting younger and younger, too. Alderman Wesley? Anybody else? That's pretty well contrived. Please, go on.
Next is Public Works Administration. Get back to personnel in a second. Contractual is down almost 69,000 year over year. Last year in the budget, there was 50,000 budgeted for a quote, "part-time outside person to come help and manage the projects over the summer." That position was not filled last summer, and was not looked to be retained in this current budget. Few other items decreased here and there, but that by and large was the driving force to that decrease. A few other items decreased here and there, but that, by and large, was the, the driving force to that decrease. Commodities was down, various line items, but natural gas and copy supplies were kind of the two, two biggest drivers of that decrease. And then other was due to a decrease in conferences and meetings going back over the last number of years. The number just looked high for the trend over the arc of the last few years. There are two expanded level items in Public Works Administration, one in personnel for a full-time project manager, and the second is for the city joining the Public Works Mutual Aid Organization. So, I believe if you go to the next slide, well, let me back up a second. Do you want to knock out everything aside from the expanded level items first, and then come back to the expanded level items? That way, we can work through the non-expanded level items first, hopefully briefly, and then get to the expanded level items.
What page was that on?
One fifty-one.
Sure, one fifty-one and one fifty-two.
Okay, the first question I have is, the proposed fourteen budget is two hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight. Now, the Public Works Administration project manager will be making, if you have your way, eleven, one hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars total. That leaves a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for salaries. What other employees do we have in the department?
Sure. It's the Public Works Director, the gentleman to my left, and the administrative assistant over in the Public Works-
That you're talking about.
Correct. If you, if you were to take out the, the exclusive of the position, the, the expanded level item, there's only two people in Public Works Administration, the Public Works Director and the administrative assistant in Public Works.
Oh, we do have an administrative assistant.
Correct.
Because it was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars different. And I thought, I was wondering if Rich was making that much. It surprised me.
Two positions.
One more comment about this. When I asked the manager yesterday or today on the phone about this, who brought this to us about having a Public Works project manager? You mentioned that it was the council ourselves that made the suggestion. I thought that's what you told me. Please tell me what you told me.
I said, part of the reason of bringing her forward was the idea last year of some type of added body that together with the staff input. So, it wasn't council's idea for this person, but a similar type person.
Oh, I thought you said it was, the reason it was in here is because you thought we wanted it.
No, incorrect.
I, I was just going, looking at the narrative on the person you wanted to hire, and then I was looking at the narrative on the public works director, Rich. Basically, what's the difference between the two? I mean, it looks like it's the same job description.
Um, no, they're very different job descriptions. And let me tell you how, how in particular they're different.
Let me put it this way. Why don't you tell us your job description, and then what this other person would be?
Okay. Before I do that, let me see if I can just pause for a second. I can tell after seven weeks, you're, you're all looking at me saying, after seven weeks, you want another person already? You just got here. And I can understand your concern about that. Well, let me tell you just a little bit about the logic behind why I think this is necessary. And I'm sure you'll do what you think is necessary, and, and I'll, I'll take whatever guidance, of course, that you give. If you look at Public Works as a whole, Public Works is broken up into, let's say, three very distinct areas. Streets, wastewater, and then our underground utilities. And those three entities each have their own budgets, each have their own leadership, each have their own day-to-day person that handles the day-to-day components of what's required to make those parts of Public Works work.
And I'm taking notes on, it was streets, wastewater, and what was the third?
And the underground utilities. So, what, what, our underground utilities-
Oh, waters, okay.
Water and sanitary utilities and stuff.
Go ahead. I apologize.
So, the one piece of this that, you know, is, is, does not have a distinct person to address day in and day out throughout the year is this capital piece. Now, this community has said, hey, let's spend forty-three million dollars over the next five years on capital improvement projects. Beyond that, there is a safety improvement project that we've been talking about that is another project. And there is one more component of that that's important to keep in mind, and that's the Elgin-O'Hare Freeway. All of those projects that you have in your CIP, this safety improvement project that you have in the heart of your town, and Elgin-O'Hare, they all require some form of leadership. Now, you can relegate that to your Public Works Director, and that's what we have in our current arrangement. Or you can assign somebody to handle the specific projects that I would delegate to that person, and allow me to focus on the wastewater treatment plant, and allow me to focus on Elgin-O'Hare updates, and allow me to focus on the safety improvement projects. So, the reason why I have this in front of you is there's an awful lot of day-to-day projects, five million dollars every year for the next, really what amounts to six years, that requires day-to-day engagement. And these other ancillary projects, I guess I would really believe that a Public Works Director could focus on and should focus on. In addition to that, to answer your question, Aldman Shawkey, there's an operations. Every day, we're still operating. We're still moving, we're still doing wastewater projects, we're still doing water projects, we're still plowing snow, we're still have an urban forestry program, and we still have what is really the operations of a Public Works department. That is, I think, what my primary function should be and is here. And it's very difficult to take those operational interests, match them up with a very aggressive and a very significant capital improvement program, and to spread myself thinly, to be honest with you, amongst them, probably doesn't do the city of Wooddale a great service.
Are you saying, I'm trying to understand, are you saying that you're going to be doing more engineering, picking up what used to be Baxter and Woodman?
If you see what we've proposed here, this is a cost-neutral proposal to you for this position. What we would do is take what we would have historically, or in the last few years, had Baxter and Woodman doing, or other engineering firms, reduce that, and use those funds to pay for a person to fill that void that would be left behind by them no longer participating.
Somebody else like to pick up on this? Aldman Wesley?
Hi, here's my scenario with this position. I have crew leaders, and I have supervisors that basically run their division. I got George that runs the street department, crew leader, he makes sure the snow is plowed and all that. I have Brad Killson that runs the treatment plant operation, supervisor. I have Mark Diddy that runs the water department. My question is, this job description that is in here, reading this job description, it seems like he's going to be doing all the work. I mean, and all the supervisors got to send you email and saying, this is what I did for snow removal, this is what I did for water department. My, my suggestion is, if you do anything with this project, you know, the city manager has, he is not put in for assistant either, okay? And he's got to run the whole city. He's got to answer to every single department head in the city, police yourself, everyone. The citizens get more complaints coming to City Hall. If you want to make this position happen, I suggest that you make this decision, and, and I'm in favor of not giving you the Public Works Director assistant. I would rather see this assistant city manager slash Public Works Administration, not this Public Works Director, because he's overwhelmed. He's-